We have to get the recording going here. Okay, now we are. Okay, now we're live. This is a, this is a public hearing regarding the authority granted to the commissioners under Senate Bill 52 involving wind and solar electric generation site authority. And to start off, I'd like to have Denise Testa, Director of our Planning Services, come up and explain the process and how this all involves the county commissioners.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for coming this evening. So Steve asked me to kind of give a quick overview of Senate Bill 52, which was passed, I believe, in September, activated in October. And it really permits a Board of County Commissioners to prevent power siting board certification of certain wind and solar facilities, provides for one or one member of the Board of County Commissioners and one member of the township trustees to be ad hoc members of the power siting board. And it also establishes decommissioning requirements for certain wind and solar facilities. So I've provided you with some handouts on what we've done already, or what some of the activities that we have completed as of, to date. And this is a draft, so the opportunity to discuss this in further detail, we really appreciate your participation and your feedback as we look at opportunities to implement our process here in Medina County. So at this point, we have sent out a letter to our municipalities, our townships, as well as our villages and our school districts, announcing our public hearing, as well as outlining our proposal. We've also posted boundary maps in the libraries, as well as sent out a couple of public notices in the Medina Gazette. The first one regarding these public hearings, the second public notice regarding the discussion of the resolution on January 4th, I believe. It's hard to believe we're almost into 2022. We've also discussed this with the Medina County Planning Commission. So essentially, our proposal is to declare all unincorporated areas of the county as exclusion zone or restricted zones from wind and solar development. If a developer would like to construct a wind or solar facility in Medina County, we are proposing the developer would make a request to the Board of Commissioners to remove the proposed site as an exclusion zone. The Board of Commissioners would then require the developer to submit an application and supporting documentation to the Medina County Planning Commission for review. Upon review, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners for further consideration and eventually a final decision. Steve, is there anything you wanted? Did I hit the points there?
No, I think those were the main points, and thank you for preparing not only the handout, but also the letter that had went out, and the map that provides, according to law, a description of where the area for exclusion, exclusionary zoning that is being proposed. So thank you for doing that.
Sure. Do you want me to stay up here?
No, well, that's fine unless you have any some questions. But we'll go ahead and just open it up for the public. I do, I do want to make comment that, make it clear that when we start talking about exclusion of solar and wind development, we're talking about utility scale solar and wind projects. Those are projects of 50 megawatt or more. And in a solar field, that'd be something like 1,000 acres or more. So in other words, it would be a considerable amount of area, territory used for those. Anything less than that 50 megawatt, like there are some, we have some current solar pro-
Yeah, we have one in Wadsworth.
One in Wadsworth, at least, that is, is less than that. I think that's only 20, 25 meg. So this is what's called the utility scale that that provision for. And the proposal, as Denise has indicated, Ms. Testa has indicated very clearly, is the proposal is declare all the unincorporated areas as exclusionary zone, and then that's the proposal we're accepting. And that's why we're having a public hearing today, the one on the, on the 13th. In getting input from the public regarding that proposal, the commissioners at any point in time before adopting this resolution can decide if we hear from property owners as well as townships that they, they do not want to be included in the exclusionary zone, we would then be able to consider that. So this is the initial proposal that, that is up for discussion and input from the public. All right? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it. All right. Like, open up the public hearing then? If anybody would like, please come forward. Since we do have people watching this online and live, would appreciate if you come forward and just give your, your name and address, and we can answer whatever questions you may have, as well as make sure that your comments go as part of the public record. So anybody would want to come forward? Somebody has to be first. One, come on up. Sorry to put you on the spot, but since we are doing these things online nowadays, I want to make sure the public have the opportunity to hear as well.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Horvath. I live in Litchfield Township. I'm a trustee in Litchfield Township. Reading what you sent out, my question to you is, is if you make these areas unincorporated, and a developer comes to you and says, "We would like to make a 50-megawatt park," and they come and make application, what is the, would I guess then, what would be the purpose of having this unincorporated? Do the commissioners have, have the authority to say, "No, we don't want this"? So what is the purpose of bringing it to the commissioners if the commissioners will say, "Yes, we will accept this"? Did I, did I say that correctly?
You did. And it's to explain the law right now, this is a brand-new authority granted to the Board of County Commissioners. The Commissioner, County Commissioners Association did not ask for this authority. It was a matter of a compromise that was developed within the legislature. And they essentially, rather than leaving it within a specific township of elected officials, to do it on a scale of a county level. And because of the multi-community impact of these kind of projects, in which case, giving the commissioners the authority meant that we could just sit and wait until a project came forward, and then decide whether to be exclusionary, or at some point, or declare it exclusionary, and then set conditions based on it not being excluded.
So can the commissioners then deny the application?
Yes.
Oh, they can?
Yes.
So that is, that is an option that they do have?
That is correct.
Oh, good, okay.
That's the current, and as well as, the decision could very well be not to, not to change the exclusionary area. Should this be adopted, and you have a project come forward, developer and property owners, as well as, the idea is also the input from the township. I would point out that the law still provides for a referendum. In other words, if the property owners within the township desire to have a project, they, they can vote accordingly, they can also declare it as exclusionary. So the, the people still retain the authority to determine whether that township or whether within that, that jurisdiction is excluded, or can have a, a solar or a wind scale project.
And of course, if we got an application in any township, the first thing we would do is reach out to the township and the elected officials and get their input on the project.
So then would the commissioners then have the say on the zoning, other than allowing it, like, have to put up?
You're talking about conditional?
Conditional.
Conditional, yes. Would the commissioners have all of that authority?
That's the intent.
Would that be bounced back to the township zoning commission?
Well, could be, actually, it could be both. In other words, it could be part of that decision. Given the ability to say no, or yes with conditions, is implicit in this, in this provision of the, of the O R C. So in other words, that the commissioners, and likewise, the township could set up, remember that if this is not exclusionary, this still would go before, since this utility scale would go before the Ohio Power Siting Board, that is a state organization, there would be one township trustee, and likewise, there's one county commissioner, that are, basically, they're ad hoc voting members of any, any kind of request for a utility scale project. So ultimately, there's input all the way along, all the way along. The question is, for us at this point, is, do we want to set up an exclusionary zone, and then, at this point, spend time working on what the conditions might be? Should there be interest within the, within the township and within property owners to have a utility scale project?
One more question, and thank you for your time. I do appreciate it. What would be the condition that you would say, "It's okay"? If the township, so let's say the township residents don't want it, but the commissioners say that they do. So then are you saying then that there would be a referendum put on the ballot? Is that how that would go then?
The law provides for a referendum by the voters. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I appreciate your courtesy. Thank you.
I'll let, I'll let the President of the Board go ahead and proceed.
Thanks, I hung up in another meeting. I was at home on a Zoom call with another group, so, sorry. So does anyone else like to address the board tonight in the hearing? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address.
Sure. Hi, my name is Christian Trebel. I live at 1730 North Medina Line Road. That's Granger. There seems to be, I think, some misunderstandings about what this does, and I'm not, I'm indifferent on large-scale projects. What I'm not indifferent on is doing smart economic development for our community. And if a project is, wants to come in, that's going to increase our tax base and create jobs in the community, I think that's something we should consider seriously. If we put a blanket no in place upfront, no one's going to look at Medina County for these projects. And maybe that's what the community wants, but I think there are potentially sites out there that might host one of these projects. I have oil in my yard. I have a well, I get my natural gas there. I'm not going to put it in one of these projects on my property, but if there is a suitable site, I think it's something we should look at on a case-by-case basis. And Senate Bill 52 allows the county to do that. Any application would come before the commissioners, who would have a veto authority over the application. And I trust our commissioners would come to the township, would come to the neighbors, would come to the residents, talk to everyone, and make an informed decision. But let's make that informed decision when there's an application, not now, when blanket across the county saying no will just scare off any potential project. No one's going to come here to do that. In terms of the talk about a referendum, the referendum in Senate Bill 52 is only on the ordinance that you are considering now for the blanket ban. And Senate Bill 52 originally envisioned exclusionary zones, one or more of them. I think the intent of lawmakers in including that was to say, "There are some spots in the county that are just clearly not appropriate for these sorts of projects." Maybe it's around a school, or around a certain agricultural use. But it wasn't intended to drop an entire exclusionary zone over the entire unincorporated area of the county, which is what we're talking about right now. If that passes, there could be a referendum on it. I think the barrier to the referendum is pretty high, and there probably wouldn't be. But there's no, nowhere in there in Senate Bill 52 is there an option for a later referendum, township by township, or project by project. Not that there would be projects, because we do this, no one's going to apply. It's also not clear in Senate Bill 52 that, once you put the exclusionary zone in place, you can revoke it on a case-by-case basis. There is no language in Senate Bill 52 to allow revocation of the exclusionary zone. Once it's in place, it's in place. The whole point of doing a case-by-case review was written into the bill as, if somebody comes in to apply for a project, they have to hold a public hearing, and then it has to come to the commissioners, and the commissioners get to say yes or no at that time, after consulting with the public. Finally, I, this hasn't been discussed, I heard some people in the audience talking about it beforehand, though, questions of decommissioning any facilities. And this wasn't covered in the summary. Senate Bill 52 does add one important thing. The proposal, if the project goes forward, has to provide a performance bond to cover the cost of decommissioning the facility someday. And that will be reviewed every five years, so, on the presumption that the cost of these things go up, and they would have to then match the correct amount. So there will be resources available for the decommissioning of a project. So I guess I'm encouraging you, don't do this. Let's keep Medina County a place that people want to come and do exciting projects. We'll look at them on a case-by-case basis, and if it fits with the site, and the proposal's a good one, and they meet all of the restrictions that the community and the commissioners want to put in place, great, let's do it, and then let's have that economic development in our community. Let's not just scare everybody off upfront from the kickoff. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, I think there are a couple points we'll have to probably have some clarity, and I think we can get that from the prosecutor on this. I think your contention that the referendum cannot be done on a case-by-case basis, township it can, is my understanding, and we'll review that. Your idea that it cannot be revoked, that basically, once you do an exclusionary zone, it cannot be revoked, likewise, I believe that, under the CCAO, in my discussion with, and there's some, actually, sessions at CCAO conference this week regarding this case, that they can be reinstated with conditions by the authority, which is the county commissioners. Legislative intent, well, legislative intent's a little bit more complicated, depends which legislature you're, legislature you're talking about. Some of the legislators did intend to actually give the authority of counties to do this countywide, and use it for those purposes. So, like I said, when you start putting on a legislative intent, you have to look at a great number of people. There are those that voted in favor of it, that would probably agree with your, your, your comment that it was not intended to be countywide, but there are those that did, and those that were sponsors on the bill, that actually, that was their original intent, is to do it on county-by-county basis. There are a lot of conditions other than, that likewise could be, should you restore a, restore a zone for a project that come through, but it would involve levels of detail that the county themselves could be much more involved in negotiating, that involved road use maintenance agreements, landscaping, and as, as well as stormwater management. Typically, those are handled by the Ohio Public Siting Boards, but at this point, early on in the projects, those could be more defined as to what the county expectations are regarding that, rather than a state board making those determinations. So, but there, as you point out, there, there are two areas, I think we can get some clarity from the county prosecutor, about, about your contention that, that once this is in place, it cannot be removed on a township or parcel-by-parcel basis. Sure. Go ahead.
All of those things you just said, though, all of those can be done, because I understand it, at the review level, most of an application comes in.
Yes.
So, I guess what is the point of this, other than to scare away projects? If you can do all of those things, do the laws, is there a way?
Well, actually, the intent was to give some time to be able to develop what the criteria are in terms of road use maintenance agreements, landscaping requirements, stormwater management, should we have proposals for large areas to be developed with these utility scale projects. Recognizing there's very few areas of the county that would probably be likely to receive that, they have to have certain terrain, likewise, they have to, since they are utility scale, they would have to tie into the grid. There's only a few areas where they actually have certain adequate substations available for tying into that, and that's part of that certification process. Likewise, a considerable area of our, our county involves Lorain Medina Rural Electric Authority, and I can say, after discussing with them, we're getting some issues on broadband, that actually, they have not been approached by anyone, or nor been involved in any conversations by, from any, any utility scale developers. So in other words, they've already, the utility scale developers have already excluded about, a good portion of our county already, that are not, basically, have no interest in pursuing. At this point, it sends, it sends a clear, like I said, a clear indication, at the county level, that should there be a proposal, that they will have to meet some criteria that has yet to be determined, and a level of decision-making that doesn't, doesn't involve the Board of County Commissioners. Our intent of this proposal was also, as I think was clearly indicated, that the county commissioners will be utilizing the Medina County Planning Commission to review all projects, to review all proposals, and help set the criteria for approving those projects. So at this point, there's nothing in the law that, that gives a planning commission that authority, but implicitly, by, by this design, the Board of County Commissioners are giving that authority for input into the process, where I think that does represent not only the townships, but also municipalities in the entire county, in, in projects such as that. So at this point, it provides a separate body, and doesn't put it all on the, I'll just say, on the responsibility or the shoulders of three, only three county commissioners. You're involving, was, are we 11 members? 11 on, on the County Planning Commission that would have insight and input into any proposed projects?
But ultimately, it does come back to the three county commissioners.
Yes, indeed.
So it is on the shoulders of the county commissioners.
Ultimately.
Ultimately. And, but what I would say in that regard is, you're probably not going to find three more county commissioners that are pro-business in the state of Ohio than the three of us. And, and we, we heavily support businesses throughout this county, and if there is a proposal that comes forward to do this somewhere in our county, and it fits, I think we will probably all support it. It's just a matter of, of, you know, where does it fit? And also, we, we could, as a result of these hearings, come back and say, "Okay, we are going to have portions of the county that we're going to exclude it in, but maybe there's some areas of the county where we'd say it's okay to have it." You know, and I'm not prepared to, tonight, tell you where that might be, but, I mean, we do have some of our townships, for instance, that are highly developed, highly populated, where it might not make sense to have it. Others that are very, very rural, and maybe those would be appropriate places to have it. So, you know, I, I think what we're trying to do now is to, to test the waters and figure out what the appropriate approach is, so that if we have somebody that comes down tomorrow and plows a proposal in front of us, that we have some basis to work from. And really, that, that's what we're trying to do here.
And not in any way, as Bill said, be anti-business. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, first, one of these. I'm not questioning New York to implement the pro-business, but again, if you put a blanket exclusion across the county, it is going to send a message to potential developers of these projects, they are not looking. Whereas, if you just leave things open, if a project person comes in and identifies a location, and brings in a proposal, you're going to have to have a public hearing, and I have to give you guys three months to go to the land commission, to review it, and look at the project, and impose any restrictions, it's all written in the bill, you can do that already. Only thing the blanket exclusion is doing, is sending a powerful message to the would-be economic development community, that they are not wanting. Everything else you want, this is accomplished, you can already do.
I, I understand your position. Anyone else like to address the board tonight? Yes, sir? Please, come on back up.
Dennis Horvath, 4389 Van de Mark, Litchfield Township. Sir, I understand complete what you're saying. I agree. I'm 100% with the commissioners on economic development. I think Medina County does a great job bringing business in, supporting the businesses that we do have, trying to bring more business in. High-speed fiber is one of the ways that they're doing that, which is, I think, is going to increase business in the county 100-fold. So I think that they're, they're looking to the future to do that. However, in a township like Litchfield, have you ever driven, excuse me, have you ever driven by one of those farms? Those wind, wind, wind turbine farms? Have you ever seen one? They're hideous. And I mean, I, I'm all for the public economic development, but they're just awful to look at. People don't move out to the county, to Litchfield and stuff like that, to have these, I don't know how tall they are, but these wind turbines, where they can walk out their door and see just nothing but wind turbines. That they're, that's my, that's my own personal opinion, okay? If you want economic development, the county will do whatever they can to help them. I just, I'm just thankful that the commissioners are doing this. I truly am. I think it's got great foresight. It would drive down property values in your neighborhood, I, I can guarantee it, it would drive down property values. And the only people that would be benefiting from it would be the company that's bringing in the, the wind turbines or the, the farms. We've had a couple cell towers go up in our township, and you just cannot believe the firestorm that that creates, and there's nothing that we can do about that. That's a public utility, and those towers have to go up. But the neighbors for a mile, if you put the tower here for a mile or so around, the neighbors are furious, and they want the township, can't do it. It's ugly, we don't want to look at it. So I'm, I respectfully disagree with you on that. I, I really do, and I'm thankful that the commissioners are trying to help take care of the townships on this situation, because the, the people in the townships would not be happy with, I don't know how many, 20, 30, 40 wind turbines just blowing and making some, so, thank you.
Thank you. And it applies to more than wind turbines. It can apply to solar, solar fields as well. Yeah, anyone else like to address the commissioners tonight? Going once? Going twice? Anything further, Steve? No, that, just a reminder, we do have another public hearing at 6 o'clock on the 13th. Likewise, this is always a topic that the Board of Commissioners are willing to hear about during our next regular scheduled meetings on, on Tuesday. It's open to the public. And the, the idea of bringing this proposal was to hopefully get individual property owners and the industry themselves interested, are they interested in Medina County? And I can tell Denise Testa and I were both on a, on a phone call with the Ohio Chamber of Commerce and some of those developers about this very proposal. And they are aware of it, and you're right, it does send the signal. They prefer the counties would not do that, but of course, they would like to go ahead and, and develop with as, as much- and develop with as much stealth as possible before revealing where they're going to do projects. And at this point, it is a matter of balancing business interests, property owners' interests, and the public interest. And I think going through this process is meant to identify and have people come out and, such as yourself, come out and please present this information to us. If we do have developers that do want to contact, and do have some farmers that have interest in this, we need to hear about it. We need to hear that. NFWA, you have a Board of Township Trustees, and one of the townships comes forward and says, "Hey, we don't want to be an exclusionary zone, we want to encourage wind farms or solar farms," then we commissioners can consider that.
Right, we can have that as an exclusionary zone, right.
Exactly, exactly. So that's the intention, is at this point in time, to bring this forward discussion, so that we can hear from the public, as well as the elected officials and property owners that might benefit from this. Likewise, economic development, our economic development people, and I'm glad you brought that up, have indicated to us some concerns with solar farms. They would rather see some of the properties in the county that kind of open in farm fields turn into factories, and turn into manufacturers and businesses that are producing a lot more taxes than a wind farm or a solar farm typically provide. In fact, there's provisions in the code that provide for tax abatement, which limits the amount $9,000 per megawatt hour of payment in lieu of taxes, which is far less than the actual market value of those facilities. So when we talk about the tax income potential for some of those projects is actually much lower than some people imagine. But that, of course, is up to the community to make that decision, whether it's a good deal for them or not. But I think that's the whole purpose of presenting and bringing this up for public discussion, is to hear those, that all that before the Board of Commissioners decide by resolution regarding this proposal. Yep.
So our next hearing on this topic is December 13th, at 6:00 PM here in this room, and then we anticipate taking action to do whatever it is we're going to do on January 4th at our regular commission meeting. So, thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
December 6.